All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Frallinger, Ms. Kuduski.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro.
Here.
Ms. Joseph. Ms. Fagan. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Siobhan.
Here.
Mr. Phelps.
Here. At this time, Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board and your deliberations this evening, the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One.
Under God. Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberation. Justice for all.
All right. Um, do we have any public comments, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
All right. We move right on to number three.
Motion three point one that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Uh, next we will hear from our solicitor, Mr. Pupio.
Good evening, everyone. Hold one second.
Thank you, Tom. There you go.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that I was not muted. Good evening, everyone, uh, and happy summer coming up soon. Um, as we conclude this school year, uh, my office has continued to work with the administration as well as the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Chester County Health Department, which was subbing for Delaware County this year, uh, and, uh, the, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Health in navigating all of the changing, uh, requirements that appear to be changing either both legislatively with the removal of the state of emergency and or the lifting of various mandates. They have unfortunately left some confusion in local school districts as we conclude this year. Uh, but, you know, uh, we have the ability as indicated in your previous health and safety plans uh, to, uh, determine, uh, what this board and the Interboro School District feels is the best method within which to keep their students, uh, safe and sound uh, and protect their employees as much as they can through various, uh, mandates. Uh, just because the governor may have lifted a mandate or a mask mandate, it is still pursuant to our he- health and safety plan and pursuant to many of the regulations well within the guidelines and the boundaries of the Interboro School District, uh, to maintain that mandate indoors until the school year is out. And then, uh, as you see fit, based upon the laws of the Commonwealth and the Pennsylvania Department of Health and Pennsylvania Department of Education moving forward. Uh, we are also moving through the process of, uh, the tax assessment appeals that we have taken. Uh, I know Ernie has a more full list of all of those items, uh, but we should begin moving through some closer to some settlements now as we get closer to trial periods. That would be all I have this evening, Mr. Phelps. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pupio. Okay, next up, moving on to number five, Mr. Evans.
Motion five point one that the Treasury, Treasurers Report for the month ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion five point two, the fund disbursements in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Uh, do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
All right, um, number seven, uh, we're going to have a committee report from Mr. Goldsberg, Delaware County Community College.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, normally, uh, we don't give committee reports, uh, at, at the, uh, June, uh, meeting, but, uh, I, I was sent something and I, I, I think it was shared with seniors, uh, from, uh, from Interboro, but I just want to, uh, reiterate it. I think it's a, a really, uh, great program that the, that Delaware Camp County Community College is offering. Uh, they're offering the, uh, twenty twenty-one Summer Bridge Program. And I just wanted to, since we have a, a public forum here, I wanted to just, uh, make everyone in the public aware of this. The, the Summer Bridge Program is designed to help recent high school graduates enhance their academic skills, increase self-confidence, and successful transition to college-level coursework. Uh, participating students are provided the opportunity to improve their skills in English, reading, and mathematics before starting their regular college experience. Tutoring and counseling are important components of the program in addition to the coursework. And the Summer Twenty Twenty-One Bridge Program is free with no costs for tuition or textbooks. So, um, I felt that that was, uh, something I really wanted to share with everyone. Um, if anybody is interested in taking advantage of that, uh, please go on to the Delaware County Community College, uh, website and look up the Summer Bridge Program. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg. All right, moving on to, uh, number eight, uh, Ms. Riley and Mr. High School.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, Marty and I are happy to present the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. If you give me a minute, I will share the screen and we will get started. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right. So just, um, basic information, as you're well aware, Marty and I have been working, um, since prior to, uh, January to begin this process of, um, developing our twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, I would like to thank the board for their continued support, uh, also recognize Mr. Siobhan as our finance chair for all the time that he has committed to supporting us through this process. Um, I'd also like to thank our directors who have put in a lot of time with many meetings, um, beginning in January to really help us develop this. There is a lot of work, as you well know, that goes on behind the scenes, especially this year due to, um, the influx of funds through ESRS and some additional grants that we have really had to do a lot of behind-the-scenes work to ensure that we are using those grant funds appropriately, um, and how to best utilize them against, um, the budget that we are putting together to present to the board. Um, and I'd also, of course, like to thank Marty. Uh, he goes above and beyond the hours and time to, um, present this budget, um, which I believe is really a testament to the work of our group and him for all that he does. So with that, we will get started. Marty, I will turn the first slide over to you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'll just start out with, um, showing everyone where the district gets their revenue from. Mo- most of the school districts have three major sources, local, state, and federal. And as you can see here, about sixty-two percent of our revenue comes from local sources. And that is real estate taxes, uh, transfer tax, delinquent taxes, parking lot taxes, uh, local grants from various entities. And about fifty percent of that forty-six million is real estate tax. So you can see we depend heavily on the taxpayers in, in the four municipalities. Uh, and it's a, I'm, I'm sorry, it's ninety-two percent of the, of the forty-six million, and it's fifty-seven percent of that total of seventy-four million. So you can see ninety-two percent, we get, we, we depend heavily on, on, on the taxpayers. The state sources are subsidy money, basic ed subsidy, special ed subsidy, transportation. Uh, we also get retirement and social security employee share, uh, reimbursed to us from the state. That's approximately fifty percent every year. So we do get reimbursed for some of those expenditures. And also we get about a two-million-dollar property tax reduction every year from the, the farmstead homestead properties. Federal sources are basically the Title One, Two, and Four programs. And then we've had some other grants come down the road, as everybody's aware of, the ESR two grant, the ARPS or three. Uh, so, so four-point-seven million is not generally where we're at. Normally, we're a lot, about half of that, if, if a little less. Um, and Mrs. Riley is going to explain the ESR, the two ESR grants in the later slides. So as you can see, we, we do, our local sources, like you say, we do depend heavily on the local taxpayers. Um, yeah, okay, thank you. And as far as the expenditure side, you can see we, we budget about seventy-five percent of the seventy-four million in per salary and benefits, uh, which, which is huge because those are contractual. A lot of the benefits are Pizer's health insurance, so that, those are increasing every year as well. So it makes it more difficult, as you can see, uh, you know, if you're only going to be about twenty-five percent of your budget is what you can really control, um, it, it makes it a little tougher. Um, as you can see, uh, the, the big number, the eight-point-one instructional and support services, that's the business office, superintendent, technology, curriculum and instruction, HR, transportation, uh, and those various departments. So, um, that's about ten percent, eleven percent of the, of the seventy-four million. I guess this is, uh, as you can see here, Pizer's, I, we, we kind of put this slide out every year. It's, it's, Pizer's is kind of leveled off and now it's in decline for the, for the increases, uh, every year. As you can see, since, uh, two thousand and eleven, twelve, there's been some huge increases. Uh, this is a, this is also something that is statutory, so we really don't have a lot of control over that at our level. There has been push for pension reform, uh, in Harrisburg, however, that's kind of a stalemate right now. So these, so these salaries, as we discussed earlier, um, you know, there are contractual obligations, so, you know, we don't really have a lot of control over those other than when we negotiate healthcare benefits. Uh, we've been pretty good with those lately because of the consortiums that we belong to. So those increases are either zero up to about four-point-five percent every year. And our special ed costs, they do increase every year. Uh, we don't get a lot of subsidy money for special ed through the state, so that makes it even more difficult to budget. And we did have some, we did have some rising charter school tuition costs, uh, mainly due to COVID this year. So hopefully those will be on the decline next year and, and years going forward. And one of the important things here for us is we've been, the, the board has been trying to increase the fund balance. Historically, the internal, uh, procedure is that five percent is where the board likes to be. And you, eight percent is the Department of Ed's, uh, maximum for uncommitted fund balance. As of the audit of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, we were at four percent. We are budgeting almost at five percent for twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're heading in the right direction. Um, and it's, we did, we did manage to, this year we had some surplus, the, the five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. We had several retirements this year that, that benefited us tremendously, uh, as, as far as the fiscal part of it. And we had, we had the additional ESR funds. So that allowed the district to budget a surplus and, and try to help, uh, with the fund balance increase every year.
Some of the things that we take into consideration when we are trying to balance the budget, of course, contract negotiations are critical to these discussions because it does provide the district the opportunity to, um, you know, really plan out what our finances and what those increases will be over the course of anywhere from three to five years. Um, we're always looking at the potential reduction or restructuring or eliminating a program, services, and staff. That's not something we like to do, um, but we, they, that is taken into consideration when looking at our budget. Um, we have in the past deferred purchasing of textbooks, materials, and technology for students and teachers. We've been very fortunate, and I, as Marty said, I will be talking about this later on in the presentation, but due to that influx of ESR funds, we have really used those funds strategically. Um, and many of those purchases, the majority of our purchases, which would have had to come from district funds, is now being paid for through ESR. So the, these are purchases that'll last us for a number of years, uh, to come, which will be savings for the district. Um, we also look at, um, how we can finance financing options for equipment purchases that the district may need to do. Uh, and of course, grant opportunities, as you're aware, we have had various grants that have, uh, supported programs here in the district, and of course, increasing taxes.
The school board is, um, proposing a two-point-six percent tax increase, uh, with the reassessment. Uh, the milage this, this year is twenty-four point five oh eight five, and it would generate approximately one-point-one million in additional revenue. And as you can see here, uh, on the, the, the left, um, the board has been pretty, it has stayed under index every year for the last ten years at least. And, uh, it's, it's been less than, with one exception, it's, it's kept it under three percent. And then you can see on the right there, that's just to kind of give you an idea of the current year, um, approved uh, milage rates and their increases. So we're kind of in the middle there. We're, we're kind of, the two-point-six, five, uh, is, is kind of right there in the middle with the other fifteen districts in the county. And the, the two-point-six percent increase, this is how it would impact the taxpayers. Now, the assessment is the reassessment values. The one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand is the average for the county, is the average residential property uh, that qualifies for farmstead homestead. So that's, it's basically the average of, of the, of the properties for the residential. And you can see with that increase, uh, it's about ninety-five dollars annually per household for the one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. And then I've thrown some other, uh, assessment figures in there that, you know, just to give you an idea, obviously, is the assessment goes up higher, your, your, your annual increase will obviously be higher. So that's, uh, basically where each household stands at this point with a two percent increase, two-point-six percent increase.
Uh, another area where the district has really focused, uh, for the last couple of years is increasing our access funding. This is a joint program between the Department of Human Services and Department of Education that allows districts to bill for medically-related services that students receive through their IEPs. So if you look over on the left side of the slide, um, you will see, you know, various ways that we have been able to, to bill. Um, for the nineteen-twenty, uh, year, our settlement, and we are a year behind on this. For nineteen-twenty, um, we made, the district received about three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. So you can see there is a big jump between eighteen and nineteen, and nineteen didn't twenty. Um, and again, we do not have, uh, our numbers for twenty-twenty-one, but we'll have those next year because we really have to wait till for the fiscal year to end to reconcile. So it does take, take some time for that to happen, but it is good to see. Um, and I want to credit the work of Jackie Shatahan up out of the Pupil Services Artman, who's department who's been working with, um, Rachel Lambert on this to really educate our staff on how to do the billing and really put the attention to this that it deserves. And as you can see, it is paying off. Um, on the right side, you will see how some of those, what we can bill for. Um, this requires us to keep meticulous records, and our, our, our professional staff and our, uh, support service folks do an excellent job of this. Some of the things that we can utilize those funds for are nursing supplies. Um, we can pay special education staff using, um, access devices for our hearing-impaired students, OTPT, psychological testing, um, leasing for our vans, um, and also any type of, um, wheelchair or part. So again, the, the special ed department does an excellent job of, you know, of billing and then using those funds to offset district costs. Um, and taking a look at our, our grants or ESRS funds that we received, for ESRS two, the district received about one-point-nine million dollars. Um, the district had up until twenty-twenty-three to spend that money. Some of the areas that we have used it are through classroom furniture. Um, we've replaced all of our Promet- Promethean panels. Um, we're putting in a new data center. We are now doing online registration through Power School, uh, funds for our K-to-12 math curriculum, lots of technology for our teachers to use, um, for their instruction, educational software, and of course, cleaning supplies. The latest round, which is ESRS three, the district is receiving about three-point-nine million dollars. We have up until, uh, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um, we are replacing a lot of furniture that we have not been able to do, um, for many, many years, which includes desks and chairs for all of our students, um, furniture for teachers' classrooms, new flexible seating for students, um, flexible desks and workspaces for teachers. Um, so we've put a lot of time into that towards the end of the year, working with our teachers to really ensure that we're, uh, buying products that will last for a long time and support our instruction in our classrooms. Uh, we are doing an abatement project in the basement of the Kindergarten Academy. There were additional devices that needed to be, uh, purchased. We are also purchasing a new elementary ELA program, social studies. We're looking at middle school science, again, educational software, staff development. Um, the district is implementing a virtual academy this year, so we will be using funds to offset the cost for the program. And twenty percent of those grant funds does need to be spent on combating learning loss, um, during COVID. We are also seeing an increase to our Title One of about five-hundred thousand dollars. This has to do with the district's number of census poor children. If you look at those numbers, we have pretty much doubled, um, doubled the, the students. So we went from about a ten-point-nine percent to about a seventeen percent increase to our population. We have not yet determined how we will utilize that four-hundred-ninety-seven thousand. We'll be working on that and more to come to the board and to our community, uh, about how best to use that. So as you can see, we are doing a lot with this money, um, and I believe we are providing, um, quality uh, materials, um, devices, instruction. We're really putting it back into the community and to our students, so, um, lots of great work here. Uh, we also are looking to add an additional pre-K class. This would bring our number up to sixty-eight pre-K students that we are able to provide a quality full-day program for. We're very excited about this. Um, we, this would be an additional seventeen spots. Um, this would cover the cost of salary and benefits for the teachers and paraprofessionals, um, provide developmentally appropriate materials and resources for the classroom, family engagement activities, and required professional development. So that application is in process, and hopefully we'll be hearing, uh, about that within the next couple of months. Change this year is that all of the pre-K classes will be here, housed here at the Kindergarten Academy. So again, we are very excited, um, about this grant, and hopefully we will be able to provide those additional seventeen spots to our children. Some proposed instructional highlights for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, of course, we are going to be integrating our new K-to-12, pre-K-to-12 math program, um, a new social studies, uh, program. We will be implementing New Zella in our secondary social studies classrooms. Um, we will sustain our professional development with all the instructional technology and with our blended learning practices, Schoology, and our educational software. If you recall, last year, the district invested quite a bit of money into Schoology. We want, uh, of course, we want to continue to use that and want to provide professional development to our teachers to ensure that they are using that appropriately with their students. Um, we are introducing our K-to-12 virtual program with both synchronous and asynchronous opportunities. We will continue our professional development and the community engagement that we started this year with diversity and equity and inclusion. Um, we are moving to a subject specialization model in first through fifth grade. That's something we've been working on um, for the last couple of months with all of our elementary teachers. Um, we will be piloting a new K-to-five ELA program, two programs, actually. We are reconfiguring our high school counseling team to provide more individualized equitable access to counselors and provoke, promote college and career awareness and transitional planning. We are doing some reimagining of the high school with our schedule and building advisory periods in, which is, um, we've been working on that the last couple of days, and lots of great conversation, and we're excited about that. And we'll be focusing on, um, STEM learning with engineering, hands-on mystery science kits, and revised STEM elective model in our high school. So lots coming up for our twenty-twenty-one school year for our students. Um, we've been discussing at a few of our GBO finance meetings that we will be implementing a technology damage fee, um, and this is on here tonight for the board to approve as part of Policy Eight-Fifteen. This would be based on devices that are lost, stolen, or have multiple instances of damage that would require us to repair. Um, for this school year, we've had under sixty incidents where, um, we probably would have assessed, uh, students with a fee. Um, and I, as I said, it's embedded into Policy Eight-Fifteen, and it is on for approval tonight fro- from the board. We do have some new, uh, staffing positions for the upcoming year. Uh, we will be, uh, adding a primary reading specialist, literacy coach, and that will be paid for through ready-to-learn funds. We're adding a high school autistic support teacher. Um, we are adding a speech and language teacher, which will be paid for through access. We're increasing a point-six English language teacher to a full-time position, and we are adding a point-five English language teacher as well for kindergarten and potentially tennicum. Um, we're have, we're going to add three ten-month technology assistants, which is necessary as we've increased um, our devices with one-to-one for all students and our staff. We do need support in that area to me, to ensure that we are able to make repairs and support students, um, when, you know, with technology. And we also added a point-five payroll assistant. Marty?
Yeah, sorry, my mouse wasn't, wasn't cooperating. Um, just some real quick highlights, uh, in Harrisburg for the PA state budget. Um, that ongoing in the appropriations committees, um, to, to date, they have not really passed anything. So these are just, uh, some highlights based, that would, um, affect the school district. Uh, the governor is recommending a one-point-three-billion-dollar increase to basic ed funding. So that would take it up to about eight-point-one billion. Uh, he's looking to pay for that from personal income tax. So that's kind of where it's, it stalled at this point. Uh, he also is looking for a two-million-dollar increase in special ed funding. So that would be a one-point-four-million-dollar line item, billion-dollar line item for the state. And last year, I believe it was a hundred-and-fifty-million increase, so he's not really asking for too much there as far as special ed, which is a problem for a lot of school districts because the special ed costs are increasing every year. Uh, the pre-K camp's funding, uh, they, they, he wants to add twenty-five million into that, totaling to two-hundred-and-forty-two million. Uh, the district's share of that would be five-hundred-and-ninety-five with the, if, if we are approved for that extra class. And lastly, the ready-to-learn funding is about two-hundred-and-sixty-eight million. That is, uh, that remains unchanged from last year and the year before. So we, we do get about half a million dollars from that, um, but that is, that has been, uh, status quo for several years.
So for community members and our taxpayers that are interested in getting involved, this is just some general information that we do provide, um, for you. If you want to know what's going on up in Harrisburg and want to get involved, uh, I would recommend that you look at educator, educationvoterpa.org. Lots of good information on there for those that are interested in hearing what the latest is happening in Harrisburg. Also, if you're looking for information on, um, our representatives, um, the the information is available on the slide as well as on the website. And that is our presentation for this evening. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. For the public, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Marty or myself and we'd be happy to talk with you again and answer any questions that you might have regarding the budget for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. I just, Ms. Riley, Mr. High School and Mr. Chavone, I want to thank all three of yous. I know this time of year, you three lose sleep. I don't know how many nights working on this budget. It's a strenuous time and you just do a great job and we do appreciate it. If I'm not mistaken, yes, Ms. Fagan has joined us. So if you could mark that down, Ms. Caldwell.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, we want to move on to number nine there, Mr. Evans.
Motion number nine is a roll call motion. Motion that Board of School Directors adopts the attached final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, with proposed expenditures of $74,396,401, requiring an increase of .0621 mils over the current millage rate adjusted for county reassessment, resulting in a tax increase of 2.6% for a new total millage rate of 24.5085 mils.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, real quick.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Sorry. But I think it may have been read incorrectly, the mils. So we may want to just read that statement again to make sure. I, I think Mr. Evans may have, I think he said .0261. So I just want to-
I'm sorry, yeah, 0.62. Okay, I'll reread the motion.
No, he was correct. He's adding it to the millage. That's the amount of mils that we're raising it. Is the .0621, we're raising that in millage to make it a total of 24.5085.
But it's not .0261, it's .621. It's 0.621. So I, I just don't want to vote for something that is, was stated one way and is written another way. So just in case, right?
Well, in my defense, you had an opportunity to be secretary there, Mr.-
I'm not being, Mr. Evans, I was not being critical in any way whatsoever. I was just, you know, for, for purposes of voting on, on tax increases, I think it's important that we don't get ourselves in a sticky situation.
Accuracy counts.
Yes.
Motion nine, that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, with proposed expenditures of $74,396,401, requiring increase of 0.621 mils over the current millage rate adjusted for county reassessment, resulting in a tax increase of 2.6% for a new total millage rate of 24.5085 mils.
Second.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any more questions or comments?
Mr. Phelps, I just had a quick comment.
Yes, Mr. Chavone.
So I know, Mr. Phelps, you thanked me for working on this, but I also, you know, wanted to thank all the board members who, you know, those finance meetings can be long, can be arduous. There's a lot of documents to read through. So I do want to thank especially the board members that are here that have participated in long hours. And not to be presumptuous, you know, before the vote is taken, but I just do want to thank everyone else for participating. Also, I know a 2.6% tax increase, that does impact our, our residents and we do not take that lightly. This board and especially the people that are on this meeting now have worked hard to get that as low as possible while also making sure that we keep Interboro School District solvent for years to come. And, and that's not to say anything negative about other school districts, but we are not taking money out of our fund balance to balance the budget, which is a testament to our, you know, our hard work over the last couple of years. And again, you know, I may be the finance chair, but every one of these board members have worked hard to make that happen. So I appreciate their hard work and diligence as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Phelps.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
But also to add to Mr. Chavone's comment, we went from January from a 3.4 down to a 2.6, which was all wheeled down to the very last meeting, which was Monday, when we figured that out down from a 3.4 to a 2.6. So we are watching every penny we can.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I think your fur is up there, sir. All right, up there you go. All right. All right, thank you, thank you for your comments, Mr. Harris. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call for this, please? You're muted, Ms. Caldwell.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Ms. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. All right, next up, Mr. Evans, number 10.
From the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved. Motion 10.1 on page two to 10.13 on page six.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motions carry seven zero. And just so if any of the public, just so they know, you know, we go over this agenda. I don't want you to think we just, you know, just fly through this. We've been over this agenda. I know it seems like we go a little fast sometimes, but we have already looked it over, discussed it. We'll kind of have a good idea what's in this agenda before we do vote. Just so you don't think we're just like flying through here page after page. And next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion number 11, with regret that the following retirements be approved. 11.1, Paul Corin, direct for special education with 25 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective July 23, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? It brings a tear to my eye to lose this gentleman. I remember him in Prospect Park School when my daughter went there. And I can't tell you how many people were upset when he left there to come to the administration building. And now he's leaving the administration building and they're going to be upset and crying again. But he will truly be missed, be missed. He was a blessing to this school district. Any other comments? I said it all. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. Motion passes at seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved. 12.1 to 12.21 on page nine.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Phelps.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of these items, as Mrs. Riley presented in the budget presentation, are paid through the ESRS funds. So again, I mentioned last meeting, but for the public, we're going to see a lot of ESRS on the agenda. So that is the federal money that was discussed earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motions carry seven zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education, Pupil Services, motion that the following items be approved. 13.1 to 13.13 on page 10.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motions carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved. 14.1 to 14.19 on page 12.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motions carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved. 15.1 to 15.6 on page 13.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motions carry seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 16, that the Board of School Directors approve the Delaware County Community College trustee reapport, reappointments of the following individuals for a six-year term ending June 30, 2027. James P. Gathney, Gathney, Cynthia Jetter, Michael J. Rannick and Raymond G. Toto.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motions, motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17 is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the final program of studies for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Quick comment, Mr. Phelps.
Yeah, Mr. Chavone.
I just hope that members of the public and students take note of the class financial literacy. I, I know personally that's the number one thing I hear from parents that they want at the high school and from friends that graduated, that, you know, being aware of how to balance checkbook, debt, interests, you know, retirement savings and all those things. So I think that's really important and I'm glad that that is added to the high school program of studies.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18, that the Board of School Directors approve the technology damage fee schedule.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? This is also a roll call, Ms. Caldwell.
Ms. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the final 2021-2022 school year calendar.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, you're up.
Ms. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interboro School District and 32BJ effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21, that the Board of School Directors approve the Interboro School District Summer 2021 Health and Safety Plan in effect from June 28, 2021 through August 20, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 22, that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions of the following policies in the category of pupils and operations under programs, student wellness, bullying, cyberbullying, and under operations, 810 transportation, 815.2 district issued personal learning device program.
Second.
Motions have been- Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Do we have any old business to address? And new business? We will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. It is bittersweet tonight that we are approving, or you have approved Paul Corin's retirement from Interboro School District. He's had an outstanding career here in Interboro and he will definitely be missed. He has had a great impact on so many families and students in his role as principal of Prospect Park, but also as director of special education and pupil services. There's one thing you can say about Paul, he cared about and cares about kids. And he has truly dedicated his career. And he had a career in education prior to coming to Interboro and private schools. So he's had a, I would say it's about a 35 year. It might even be more than that. I'm not sure how many years he had in the private sector.
Forty.
Total. Forty-year career. I mean, that's, that's incredible. So I know he's going to be missed, but we're, you know, we're looking forward to hearing about all the great things he's going to do in his retirement. And I know that he has worked really hard this year to support the transition with Ryan and Rachel. And I know they are ready to take on this task and I'm confident. So Paul, we love you and we wish you the best and hopefully you'll stay in touch with us. Also, summer registration is taking place, so I would ask parents to please continue to check the website. We are, we are also doing residency verification for students entering grade one, six, nine and 11 and all multiple occupancies. Information again is available on the website. And finally, on behalf of the administration, I would like to wish everybody a relaxing summer. We will be providing updates to our parents over the summer with our plans for the upcoming school year as it relates to a health and safety plan, if that's required of us to put together. And also any other important information that parents need to have. But our goal is to return to school as it was prior to COVID. And I know parents are excited to get back as well as our students. So we are ready and we are preparing for the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments from any of our board members? Hearing none, I would like to just, again, to see Paul leaving is, it's, it's a little upsetting, but I know he's only a phone call away and if we need him, I'm sure he will be there. So, all righty, at this time, the Interboro School District will continue to hold all future readings remotely until further notice. Please visit the Interboro School District website at www.innurborosd.org for further information. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, July 19, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, July 21, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate it.